We'll call the Tuesday, May the 15th, 2012, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. At this point, I'll call on Vice Chairman Marvin Norman to deliver our invocation. Mr. Norman?
Well, sir, Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity just to be here. Lead us, guide us, and direct us in your way so we may carry out this meeting in a way that should be carried out. Bless our troops and all that they do to provide protection for us and this country. Bless them on a daily basis, Lord, and help their families. Again, lead us, guide us, and direct us in your way so we may have a good meeting and carry it out in a proper way. In your name we pray. Amen.
This evening, we're pleased and indeed honored to have a couple of scouts with us this evening. We have Mr. Richie Bandy. He's with Troop 360 from Western Avenue Baptist Church, and Mr. Charlie O'Toole from Troop 171 at Williamson Chapel. And at this point, I'm going to ask these two young gentlemen to come forward through the gate and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of Our Country. All stand, please.
Please draw me into the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Call on our county manager, Ron Smith. Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda from staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we are going to have one adjustment, and that is going to be memo number four. I'd like to remove that from the agenda.
Okay. Is that all you have, sir?
Yes.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda coming from any member of the board this Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt this agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion for approval of this agenda comes from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to appointments for the board, and we have a presentation from the Council on Aging Executive Director Anna Rice on the fiscal year 2013 Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan. Ms. Rice, if you'd come forward, please.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, in March, the Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee, including Commissioner Griffith, met on several occasions to both review the current status of aging programs in our county, as well as to prioritize aging services for the coming year. The committee is also responsible for creating an annual aging funding plan for your review and consideration. I'm here this evening to present the committee's proposed 2013 Aging Funding Plan, and I believe you have a copy of that. Let me frame the plan with just a few comments about aging in our county. Our 60-plus population now numbers over 29,000 people, and not unlike North Carolina as a whole, our 60-plus population continues to show significant growth. We continue to hear oftentimes loudly from the baby boomers, those born between '49 and '64. Obviously, those early boomers are now in their 60s and are eligible for aging services. Meanwhile, on the other end of the spectrum, and you've heard this before, those 80 and older are the fastest-growing segment of our aging population. The challenge, then, is to not only provide services for a growing segment of the aging population, but also a diverse group of seniors, the young, old, or new seniors as they age, and the frail elderly who can remain in their homes, in their communities, with some support. What does this mean for our county? It means the Council on Aging needs to provide a range of services along the continuum of care, meeting the needs of the 60-year-old who just recently lost his job and doesn't know where to turn, or the 65-year-old facing a decision about a Medicare Part D prescription drug plan, while at the same time addressing the very different needs of the 88-year-old who desperately wants to remain in his home and in his community. The proposed 2013 Aging Funding Plan reflects our best efforts to continue providing vital services such as transportation to medical appointments or to the grocery store, will help the 85-year-old woman living at Statesville Emanuel Place or Mooresville Manor stay in her apartment by providing Level 1 chore services once a week, maintaining a clean and safe environment for her to live independently, will help the 79-year-old mother take care of her 60-year-old daughter crippled mentally by the ravages of organic brain syndrome. The daughter, abandoned by her spouse, repeats the same questions endlessly and without ceasing. A labor of love, the care is taking its toll on her elderly mother, who cannot leave her daughter home without supervision. Council on Aging respite services means this loving and dutiful mother can leave the home once or twice a week to not only get a break from the endless stream of questions, but also take care of the simplest necessities like getting groceries or stopping by the drugstore. Will continue providing nutrition services, offering congregant meals in Mooresville, Troutman, Statesville, and Harmony, providing a gathering place for seniors to enjoy a balanced meal, as well as that all-important social contact and interaction on a daily basis. For those too frail to leave home, volunteers will deliver a meal to the lone, isolated senior who just may appreciate that vital human contact more than a hot meal. Or perhaps the volunteer will discover the senior who's confused, unable to communicate, and on the verge of a diabetic coma, just in time to avert a more serious crisis. Or maybe the volunteer cannot get that senior living alone to answer the door, only to discover, as trite as it may sound, she has fallen and cannot get up, having tripped on the rug the night before. And for seniors of all ages from 60 to 100, needing a variety of services, will continue providing countless opportunities at the Council on Aging's Iredell and South Iredell Senior Centers, both certified by the Division of Aging as Centers of Excellence. Programs and activities can include everything from getting help with a long-term care issue like choosing an assisted living facility, to cutting through the Medicare maze to choose a supplemental policy. It could be learning to use a computer to Skype with distant family in California, or email a grandson serving his country in Afghanistan, or it might even be taking a driver's refresher course to improve driving skills. It could be Tai Chi to improve balance and prevent a devastating fall, or water exercise to deal with the limited mobility of rheumatoid arthritis, or charit exercise, incidentally led by a senior, to increase flexibility and strength. It might be chess, or bridge, or canasta, or myyong, or dominoes, or any of a number of card and board games that require focus and attention, keeping the mind active and engaged, forestalling mental decline. It might even be senior center participants line dancing with elder center clients, or picking and grinning on Tuesdays, or a workshop on disaster preparedness, or how to avoid a scam, or a series of classes aimed at helping caregivers entitled Powerful Tools for Caregiving. All of these services, services along the continuum of care for active to frail elderly and all those in between, are available through the Older Americans Act, which funds the Home and Community Care Block Grant. We were pleased that Older Americans Act funding for 2013 remained essentially level, increasing by just over $1,000, with the committee voting to allocate these few additional dollars to respite services and home-delivered meals to priority services. Otherwise, the 2013 plan you have essentially replicates the current Aging Services Plan for the current fiscal year. As you may recall, Older Americans Act dollars, which are our Home and Community Care Block Grant monies, require a minimum 10% local match. The county has helped the Council on Aging meet this requirement for many years, and in doing so, brings back $9 in federal funds for every dollar contributed by the county. We appreciate this vital support, and also want to publicly thank Commissioner Griffith again for taking the time to join us for our Block Grant Committee meetings and our Aging Plan work. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about the proposed plan, and as always, we appreciate your consideration in approving the 2013 Aging Funding Plan for Iredell County.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? I guess not. Ms. Rice, we thank you for your dedication and your work in looking after these folks. You provide a very valuable service to our community on behalf of this board and the county. We certainly thank you for that. So the request we have before us this evening is approval of this funding plan. If there's no further questions, the floor is open for a motion.
I'd like a motion that we approve the Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan for year number 2013.
Okay. Ms. Griffith offers a motion for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. This evening, we have with us Wesley Davidson, representing the Tar Hill Trail Blazers, with a request for permission to construct a multi-use trail that could eventually become a county park, trails to be known as the Fanjoy Road Trail. Mr. Davidson, if you'd come to the microphone, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is Wesley Davidson. I'm a member of the Tar Hill Trail Blazers. We are a 501(c)(3) group based out of Charlotte. We have built over 100 miles within a 45-minute radius of downtown Charlotte. We consist of 350 members. To give you a little bit of information on our, further information on our club, some of the municipalities that we work with are Charlotte Parks and Rec, North Carolina State Park, Statesville Park and Rec, and the Forestry Service with Uwari. Locally here in Iredell County, we've worked with Lake Norman State Park with the Otuse Trail. We have spent the last 11 years building the Otuse Trail. By the end of 2012, we will have 30 miles, and we've received over $125,000 worth of grants in that time to help build that trail. Locally here in Statesville, we have constructed the Signal Hill Trail, which is four and a half miles. We've just signed a memorandum of agreement with the City of Statesville, making it an official trail. With both of Lake Norman State Park and Signal Hill currently running strong, we have been looking for a new project. And talking with some of the county staff, we were recommended the parcel on Fanjoy Road, which is marked by the purple arrow there. Talking to the staff, we came upon the conclusion that it would help intersect with the Carolina Thread Trail in the future. What I show here in the red is the parcels that we are mainly looking at, and the pink is the future Carolina Thread Trail. This would really help the future park connect to many users, not just by driving, but allow them to get to it by their communities using the Carolina Thread Trail. This is a further close-up of it, showing the property that we are looking to use. In the very top, you can't quite see it there, but the Thread Trail will come in right along there on the top, once again allowing us to implement the Thread Trail in this park. What we would provide as the Tar Hill Trail Blazers is layout of the trail to EMBA standards. EMBA is the International Mountain Bike Association. They are the authority on proper trail building throughout the world. They're based out of Colorado. They are a 501(c)(3) as well. We are a charter group of the International Mountain Bike Standard as the Trail Blazers. We would also use volunteer labor to build the trail. With other trails, we have used various school groups, trail users, the scouts, hiking clubs. One of the latest ones that we've really helped use with Lake Norman State Park is different school groups that need volunteer hours, has worked out very well for us. Once trail is constructed, we will also provide the trail maintenance, making sure that there are no liability issues and that the trail is properly maintained. The support we're seeking from Iredell County for the property is a parking lot, which would roughly be a 20-car gravel lot, the willingness to partner with us as grant owners, as the county is the owner of the property, and then low-cost construction materials. We control dirt, lumber, crusher run, as the county sees fit for us to use. What we would like to build is a multi-use trail consisting of four to six miles. Building trail is valued at about $15,000 per mile for volunteer labor. The users for this trail would be non-motorized vehicles, mainly off-road cyclists, hikers, trail runners, dog walkers. We have a lot of cross-country school teams that use Lake Norman State Park, and has also been a very good usage of that. This map here shows what a potential trail layout for the property may be. Right now, you can see the red on the bottom would be the potential gravel lot that we would have in place, and then we would lay out the trail before, and then it would be inspected, and then we would build it. We have projected budget. The estimated building of five miles at $3 per linear foot would come out to $79,200 worth of volunteer labor. The expenses that we would ask from the county would total up to $33,908. So we would definitely have a lot of money from our end as well coming into it in the form of volunteer labor. The timeline that we would suggest is signing a memorandum of agreement between the Tar Hill Trail Blazers and Iredell County. We would lay out the approved memorandum of agreement trail, which will take about six-plus months, the approval of the trail layout by Iredell County, building of the trail, which is about four months per mile when we are hand-building the trail. We would have the approval of the built trail by Iredell County, and then we would have a trail grand opening, which would be about two to three years after signing the memorandum of agreement. And then why we're looking to do this. From a personal standpoint, I've lived in Iredell County all my life, and I've used many of the parks and rec given to me through the county. Selfish reasons, I use the trails, but it would also be a great way for me personally to give back to the county that I love. It also would be a new county in the east, or a new county park in the eastern part of the county, as the Iredell County Master Plan calls for. We would be able to provide amenities to local families, allowing them to have improved health and wellness, and, once again, we would have the implementation of a park with the Carolina Thread Trail. On the bottom of this page, I have usership for Lake Norman State Park Trails, just showing November, or October, November, and December for the three main trails that we have at Lake Norman State Park. Within some of these, we have over 14,000 users that come from all over, not just Iredell County, but from Mecklenburg, outside, we have people from Charlotte, a little bit of, or from South Carolina, a little bit of anywhere, coming to use those trails. So it would really help, trails will attract people from out of our county, which will also spend money with local businesses. At this time, I would take any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions? Mr. Davidson?
Could you go back to the sheet with the cost that you're asking for the county?
Yes, definitely.
There you go. The asbestos survey?
Yes.
$230. There is a house on the property?
Yes.
And then you want to remove the house and the debris to the landfill?
Yes.
Okay. The cost on the debris to the landfill, is that tipping fees and things that's just charged to move it, or is that the moving fee?
What did you remember exactly?
That's, if I'm not mistaken, that's the amount that, it'd be the tipping fees, basically.
Okay. Volunteers would take it down? But, no, they can't.
We cannot.
Because it does, it has, if it has asbestos. So where?
That was in the cost of the removal.
The $6,000?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Is that low? Is that an actual estimate?
It is an actual estimate.
If there's no asbestos in the house, if there is asbestos, would that cost go up?
That was the quote that I was given for asbestos removal with the building, if there is.
Okay.
And one thing about that specific item, I have that in yellow because it's an item that will have to be done to that property in the future anyway. The house is falling apart, and going and walking the property, I know the one barn has quite the few beer cans in it, so somebody is using that already for a place to hang out, so it is a potential hazard.
I thought I understood you to say there'd be no liability to the county. Is that correct?
We have worked through a lot of the liability. One of the big things with the International Mountain Bike Association is that we are covered under their insurance for building the trails. That is one of the things that membership to the organization helps to carry and cover.
You say building it, but how about when someone's riding on it, and someone comes from the opposite direction, they have a crash, who's going to be liable on that? The county, or?
The, there's a couple of different ways around that. The big thing with liability would be that as long as the trail is properly built and properly maintained, that helps to cover liability for that. We would recommend that all users go one way to help keep down people crashing into one another.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Of Mr. Lambert. When were we planning on using this for your purposes?
We would eventually use it as our site for soil. It's not really planned for the public site. Some could change in the future, but that's all dependent on the type of place, what we find, and if it works out. I can guarantee you, it could be 10 years from now, it could be 20 years from now. I don't guarantee that we get land back.
I'm sorry, you're last in it. I couldn't hear.
The thing I would almost guarantee is the land does come back, which is one of the, one of the dangers.
Okay. And y'all are aware of that?
Yes, we realize that it is county land.
Okay. If that's the case, then could, could dealing with the home and stuff, that would come out of, would that come out of your budget as opposed to the rec department budget? Everybody's pointing fingers now. This is when it gets fun.
Yeah.
That's Roberts. Okay.
Woody, Woody, this guy's happened. The first, like, big thing is, sometimes they hire, pass all the waste of.
Okay. Were you all planning to put this in the budget?
Well, we wanted to see what the reaction was tonight before including it in the budget, so there's, so there is nothing in there now. I will, I will point out that yellow strip there, at some point, we are, whether this trail goes through or not, we're probably going to have to deal with that house and potentially the barns. I think we would all agree on that. And I will address the liability a little bit more. We spent a good bit of time knocking this around because liability was, was an issue for us as we got this request, and our insurance carrier is satisfied with this MOA, and as far as the volunteer labor and the way that it's phrased, as far as inspection of the trail and maintenance of it, because those are the two big things that you have to look at from a liability standpoint.
Do you have enough members to main, to facilitate maintaining a third trail?
Yes, we do.
I guess what we're asking for tonight, though, is you folks are asking for permission to proceed with discussion on this, and at some point, we're going to decide how much of this Mr. Lambert's going to pay for, how much Mr. Woody's going to pay for, and is it going to come out of the park fund, or is it going to come out as an amendment to Mr. Woody's operational budget or so forth, and that'll be determined later?
Yes, sir.
And over a couple of year period, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Mr. Davidson said there's a six-month, basically a six-month period where they would actually do no, no construction whatsoever, and they'd just do trail layout.
But the, you said the time for construction was?
The layout of the trail will take six to, months to a year, depending on exactly what we get into with that. Trail construction, I believe that was this way, tends to be about four months per mile. Before, before we would even do that, we would have to do the layout, which would be at least six months.
Okay, so it's four months per mile, so you could be looking at a year and a half.
Yes.
So conceivably, we could look at funding this thing over three budget cycles.
Yeah. It would take a while for this to even open up, I would anticipate.
Okay. Any other questions? The request for force is permission to move forward, so floor is open for a motion.
Can I ask a question for clarity? We're giving them permission to move forward at this point. We're not giving them permission to spend any money.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. I guess implied in that is some, some level of support for them to go ahead and spend money. If we're not going to let them spend money, we need to tell them so now.
I would consider a yes vote to be an intent to do it over a couple of year period.
At least, yeah, two to three years. And internally, the county can decide how it's going to be funded, whether it's going to be as an amendment to Mr. Woody's budget, or to what extent we're going to ask Mr. Lambert to take a hit on this thing, or whatever. That's something we'll discuss internally. It won't affect Mr. Davidson or his folks, other than what they've committed to spend already.
Mr. Chairman, one thing you may want to consider doing is, if there is a motion to approve, you do have a memorandum of understanding that's, that's, that we submitted to you. If you vote to go forward with it, I would recommend approving the MOA, because if these guys are going to be out on the site, we want to be, I think that's our protection. You know, that sets in place some things that would protect the county. And Mr. Pope, if you have anything to add on that, but I think that'd probably be prudent.
I'd like to follow up a little bit on Mr. Robertson's comment about the ultimate use of the property. I think it'd be important to include in the motion that the county would reserve the right to use the property for the purpose for which it was originally intended at some
I agree with that, but don't you think there would be some, some minimum time that we could commit to these folks? I mean, they're going to spend, again, $70-something thousand in sweat equity for most part.
Volunteer labor. If we build five miles, the volunteer labor comes out to $79,000.
I think fairness would dictate that we would make some minimum commitment to them so they can make a determination whether it's worth it to them. And then a protection on our side, that commit wouldn't be too long a commitment in case Mr. Lambert at some point needs that dirt. Do you think, Mr. Lambert, do you think 10 years, do you think you can do without that site for 10 years?
I understand. I understand. Okay.
And we could treat it similar to how we, we treated the Twin Oaks Golf Course, where basically we say 10 years, but if we need it sooner, we can give, you know, give some notice on that, and that's an option.
Okay.
Would there be an issue, Dave, of, do you have a concern over trespassing?
Well, here, that, I guess you're referring like to the old land table itself? They have a great set of, there's a line in there, I think, there's a line in there of, and some gates, and some gates, and they're created.
On the property, there is a natural, natural barrier in the form of a creek, and as Mr. Lambert said, the one, I think, yes, right here, is gates to secure the couple roads that lead to the old landfill.
Okay, any other questions? If not, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve with the following understanding. Put in the motion, if property is needed before 10 years is up, the property would be given back to the county at that time.
We're, we're not giving up the, the property.
The rights.
The land of the...
The rights. The rights of the property. Was there, it's been a couple of days since I read this thing. There was, there was an exit clause in here, and I think it was, was it 30 days?
90 days.
90 days.
There's a 30 and 90, but 90 is basically the, the agreement by both parties.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of this request and the memorandum of agreement with the provision that if the county should need this property, we can, we can reassume control of it with a 90-day written notice. So, Mr. Davidson, what I guess we're telling you is with that, that motion, the best we can give you is an estimate, we can commit two of 10 years. You find that agreeable?
I do.
Okay. All right. All right. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
This evening, we have on our agenda requests from Mr. Beal Sherrill of the Iredell County Rescue Squad, and Mr. Sherrill, because of some illness, is unable to be here this evening. And at this point, I'm gonna call on Mr. Ron Smith, our county manager, to make this presentation, and I'll provide whatever assistance I can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Iredell County Rescue Squad is requesting $25,000 to be granted from their capital funds. The reason for the, for the request is to match a NC Rescue and EMS grant, and it's a 50-50 grant, so the $25,000 would match a $25,000 grant. They're gonna use the funds for turnout gear, radios, pagers, and thermal imaging equipment for recs, and this will take them from over $100,000 in that, in their capital funds to just over $75,000.
Any questions? All right, floor's open for a motion. This chairman move for approval. Motion for approval comes from Commissioner Mitchell. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, we'll call the meeting into public hearing in consideration of an economic development incentive of $339,226 for an undisclosed company based on an investment of $23 million. And we have with us this evening, Mr. John Merrick. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Johnson and Commissioners. I come before you tonight with a request for a tax, or an industrial tax grant from a company that wishes to remain anonymous at this point for competitive reasons. This company is based in Statesville, they manufacture components for the automotive industry. They are planning to add new capital equipment and perform general outfit to their current building. This new equipment will replace obsolete equipment, which has minimum current tax value. The company does not expect to create new jobs as the result of this investment, but does expect to retain existing jobs, some of which might otherwise be lost to competing facilities here or abroad. The equipment replacement is scheduled to begin in mid-2012 and should be completed by the fourth quarter of 2013. To the best of my knowledge, this company is current on all fees and taxes and does not have any outstanding environmental or safety issues. This request is based on a total investment of $23 million over an 18-month period, and that's broken down into approximately $12.7 million in 2012 and $10.3 million in 2013. The purpose of the investment, as I mentioned, is to improve the productivity and competitiveness of the Statesville facility and to maintain the workforce and increase the productivity and the productive capacity of this, of this facility. Based on the calculations we have done for the investment and the timing of that investment, the requested tax grant comes to $339,226 over five years. I'd be happy to answer your questions that you might have this evening.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Merrick? I guess not. It says a public hearing, is anyone else here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter, either for or against it? If you would, please come forward and state your name. Okay, I assume there's not, so we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor's open for a motion. This chairman move for approval. We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners.
That brings us to administrative matters. Mr. Smith?
The first two items are from the sheriff's office, and Chief Dowdell will be here to make those presentations. The first is for Budget Amendment Number 48, and then the second is to apply for a 2012 JAG grant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. We're here tonight to ask you to, we'd like to transfer $62,000 from our commissary funds to the jail uniforms to purchase for the staff. At this time, we're leasing our uniforms, and it's just the, we've done it for about the past four years to evaluate that program, and it's not been very good for us, and our uniforms has not been holding up like they should be, so we're asking that we move this money to go ahead and purchase the jail staff some new uniforms that would be more durable and look a little more professional.
All right, any questions? As far as the cleaning of the uniforms, is that something we're gonna do, or we're gonna have some service do that for us, or?
Right now, we're gonna handle that ourselves.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve Budget Amendment 48.
Okay, motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 48 comes from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Our next item, we're asking the request consent to apply for the 2012 Justice Assistance Grant from Department of Justice. This year, the sheriff's office has been awarded $16,910, and we're gonna be using these funds with this grant for the Training Academy and the Sheriff's Youth Athletic League, and there is no match for this grant.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, floor's open for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the request to apply for the Justice Assistance Grant from the Department of Justice.
Commissioner Griffith offers a motion for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is Memo Number Eight, this is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 49 for the appropriation of 911 fund balance, and David Martin will make that presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Here to see and to seek approval on Budget Amendment Number 49 to allow us to transfer funds from our 911 fund balance. The 911 board, in revamping, allowed us to use up to 50% of our fund balance for public safety issues. In so doing, we come up with $249,898 that basically we need to spend before June the 30th, or we'll lose, could lose the funding. Basically, what they're telling us is we just may lose part of the allocation next year. So, in order to do so, EMS has bought some heart monitors, so we're asking this budget amendment in order to use this money to reimburse the county for the heart monitors that EMS or cardiac monitors that they had purchased, since that money was already budgeted in the budget, to then transfer that fund back into the communications budget in order to upgrade our consoles at a later date.
Okay. So, we go ahead and spend it, or they'll take it away from us, so we're gonna spend it, and then we'll reimburse it?
They will only allow us to carry over 20% of our allotment, which amounts to about $68,000.
Okay. Government's the only place where frugality is punished, isn't it? Okay.
I was gonna say, I mean, that was, I remember that being a line, that was a line item last year that, that was a big hit, but that doesn't go away, we're just, we're doing a shell game, basically. A little bit of a, a little bit of a switcheroo, okay.
Okay.
All right. We're still on for the heart monitors, that's, that's what it boils down to.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, any questions, or Mr. Martin? Hearing none, the floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 49.
Vice Chairman Norman offers a motion for approval of Budget Amendment Number 49. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item is Memo Number Nine, and this is a request for approval of collaborative event program criteria and guidelines between potential nonprofit organizations and our Parks and Rec Department, and Michelle Heffler will make that request.
Hi, greetings to Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In an effort to ensure that the collaborative efforts and events between Iredell County Parks and Recreation Department and approved nonprofit organizations and/or agencies are fair and do not cause any undue burden, excess spending, or employee compensation, a list of guidelines has been created. Any event to be collaborated between Iredell County Parks and Recreation and selected nonprofit agencies or organizations must meet the criteria prior to department head consideration. You should have an attached document listing those guidelines. Since I submitted that information, I have spoken with Mr. Chairman, and we have amended one item and added a, a single line as number one to include, and I'll put in quotations here, formally written letter of agreement drafted by the organization identifying specific requests and conditions, including the benefits to Iredell County between the organization and Iredell County Parks and Recreation. I think Ms. Moore would have submitted that revised version to you guys late today.
In my discussion with Michelle, I, I just felt like it was good on the front end when somebody came in and asked for us to participate with them. We're certainly always glad to do, do that, but let them know at the beginning of the process that there, there would be some requests made of them, that it would be necessary for them to, to have organized the plan, present that plan, and make some commitment as to what they can bring to the table before our staff got too far in the process and came to the realization that they could not fulfill all the expectations of the, of the applicant. And I, this is not quite the way I worded it, but actually she says it a little better than I do, so I'm, I'm comfortable with this. So that, that's the reason that's in there, and I hope the board will find that agreeable. I don't think it's an unnecessary burden to put on these folks, but it will guard the time of our staff as far as the time they'll have to spend on helping coordinate these things.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, before the meeting, she said, oh, did you get a cop, Michelle had asked if, if I'd gotten a copy of it, and I said, no, and then, and then I thought, yes, and I realized, no offense, Mr. Pope, this document isn't full of a bunch of wither twos and hither fours and all that kinda good stuff, but it's pretty, but it's pretty plain, and, and line number four really, I think, is the ultimate protection, which is basically that any time the department head feels that, that we're going down the wrong path, you can say no, and then it's done.
Correct.
That's it, so you've got the authority, exercise it wisely, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Plainly spoke, plainly written, easy to understand, difficult to misinterpret. Thank you. No offense, Mr. Pope.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Is there a process that in the event a nonprofit is denied, that they have an appeals?
We could certainly implement one. I don't have a process in place currently, but that's something that could be considered for sure.
And if they are denied, will they be given the opportunity to make corrections and reapply?
Sure.
I think, I think in this process, it'll become apparent to the applicant where their application is deficient, and what changes have to be made. That can either be worked out through the continuation of the process, or they can be told by Ms. Heffer or Mr. Woody that they need to withdraw their application and, and let's start over. I served a number of years on the Recreation Board, and these folks are there to help you, not to be a hindrance to you, but at some point, I, I think they do have the judgment to decide when an applicant is just not ready to proceed. I feel comfortable allowing them to have that discretion and let them make that decision, and if we're contacted, then we can find out what the problem was, and we can have these folks try to work through it. Again, that's another reason why I thought it was good on the front end to let folks know that when they walk in the door, we are gonna have some expectations of them. But I do appreciate your work on this, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions? If not, the floor is open for a motion to approve this final version.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion for approval from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item is memo number ten, and what we'd like to do here is call for a public hearing on June fifth, two thousand twelve, at seven P.M. regarding the Aridale County Fiscal Year twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen budget.
Okay, the floor is open for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Robertson's offered a motion to call for a public hearing on June fifth, two thousand twelve, at seven P.M. regarding the Aridale County Budget for the forthcoming year, two thousand twelve to thirteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Next item is a request for approval of the April twenty-twelve refunds and releases. Everything seems to be in order, and recommend for approval.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve comes from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And the final item is a request for approval of the May first, twenty-twelve minutes.
Okay, if there are no changes or corrections, the floor is open for a motion for approval of the May first, two thousand twelve minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. And, thank you, Mr. Smith. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Central Line of Work, excuse me, Workforce Development Board, we have two announcements of vacancies. Appointments to boards and commissions, Troutman Board of Adjustment, extra territorial jurisdiction, floor is open for nominations, and one appointment is necessary. I would nominate Ms. Vicki Troutman. Are there any other nominations? If not, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Ms. Troutman by a commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Cooperative Extension Service Advisory Council, we have one appointment for a commissioner. Floor is open for nominations. I believe we had a volunteer last time, didn't we?
Yeah, I, I volunteered.
I'd nominate Mr. Robertson as the commissioner appointee.
Mr. Robertson, I'll be happy to fill in as a backup if you're unable to attend.
Okay. All right, all in favor of Mr. Robertson's appointment, say aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Griffith is his substitute. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Any unfinished business come to our attention? Public comment period, I believe we have one person signed up, Heidi Demaree, who'd come forward.
Good evening, Chairman Johnson and County Commissioners. I'm here tonight because Aridale State's Full Schools is asking parents and the community to show their support for public school funding as they begin to look at the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen possible budget cuts. My name is Heidi Demaree, and this is my husband Lance. We are both proud residents of Aridale County. I would first like to thank you for everything you do for the Aridale State's Full School System. I am very aware that we are living in a very sticky economic climate, one that has not been witnessed since the nineteen thirties. We all have been affected by the downturn in the economy from two thousand and eight. I also value the fact that many of you went out on a limb to support a controversial tax increase to give ISS a bump of seven-point-two percent to offset the twenty-one percent decrease in funding ISS suffered in the twenty-ten, twenty-eleven school year. I'm sad to say that as a parent of a second grader at Lake Shore Elementary in Mooresville, and another child at Mountmore and IB World School, the lack of funding is beginning to rear its ugly head. This is evident in the size of our classrooms and the lack of needed supplies many teachers go without. It breaks my heart to hear that many teachers are using their own personal incomes to purchase much-needed extras to give our children a wonderful learning environment. Many of our parents are delighted to help our teachers with the many donations they request, but the climate is beginning to dry up. As a classroom mother for the last six years, I have noticed a major decline in donations recently from parents. I'm afraid to say things could reach a point when the well is dry and the teachers will not get the support from the families that they at times rely so heavily on. Unfortunately, for some of our ISS families, giving a few dollars here and there is sadly impossible for them. With looming cuts to the ISS budget, I worry that our schools will lose the most valuable resource we have, good educators. Our classrooms are currently bursting at the seams, we cannot afford to lose any more teacher assistance or the amount of teachers we have. I know that ISS holds my children's safety with the utmost regard, but I worry with a lack of funding that their safety will be compromised. I know that my school is currently running with the skeleton crew in the office, and we lack a much-needed guidance counselor. Many parents at our middle school are worried about losing Officer Burleson, who sadly has to put out many fires at both of our Lake Shore schools. Our children deserve the best possible school experience we can offer them. Without a proper education, our children will not be successful adults, Aridale County residents, or even Americans. We did our research before moving here. We live in a great community that has the reputation of having a wonderful school system. We need to keep it that way. Our county can only benefit fiscally with a strong school system that will draw more people to our county, attract more businesses, and give a boost to our local economy. Please don't take any more of our much-needed fuel from our school. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Any new business to come to our attention? County Manager's Report. Here we go.
Looking forward to this day for months now. Tonight, we'll be, we'll be presenting to you the fiscal year twenty-thirteen budget, and we have those waiting for you downstairs, so after the meeting, we can, we'll distribute those. And as you know, as part of the budget, every year, it is the obligation of the county manager to give a budget message. And what I would like to do is, this is included in your budget books downstairs, but I'd like to just read this verbatim, both for you and for the public in attendance who are, and who are watching. Protecting the bottom line was the primary theme used in the development of the fiscal year twenty-thirteen county budget. Although revenues are projected to increase in the upcoming year, they are primarily due to relatively unstable sales taxes. We have seen a modest increase in ad valorem taxes primarily based on the increase in the tax rate last year, but the county continues to see slow growth in new development and investment. We forecast that sales tax revenues will continue to grow in twenty-thirteen, although at a moderate rate, and we are not anticipating a high rate of growth in real and personal property in the next fiscal year. Because of the fairly unstable nature of our revenue stream, the focus in the coming year is on items that should not have been, should not have a significant impact on future budgets. These expenditures largely include one-time and delayed purchases, adherence to vehicle and equipment replacement schedules, and our reliance on technology and web-based applications. I've shied away from recommending new positions that are a result of new services or programs, but instead have focused on positions that are necessary for public safety purposes or that will allow our county departments to perform their jobs appropriately. It is anticipated that the county will see a modest one-point-two-six percent increase in its total taxable value in fiscal year twenty-thirteen. Although we have seen an increase in the overall base, there has been a decrease in the real property valuation, and it is also unclear when development and significant investment will return, and then to what extent. In the past, growth in the taxable value has generally allowed the county to maintain a low tax rate while still allowing for growth within the county budget. However, this year's growth is roughly one-third that of past years. It is probably safe to assume that this will be the norm for the next several years. Although in fiscal year thirteen, we are projecting a three percent increase in sales tax revenues, it is unwise to consider this a consistent source of income. Therefore, we have taken a conservative view in these projections and are reluctant to put too much emphasis on this revenue stream. Generally speaking, bottom-line increases have been attributed to the growth in the ad valorem revenues and not the sales tax. This budget focuses on three major themes when it comes to spending. First, support our public safety departments. Second, provide for interdepartmental needs and infrastructure. And third, increase appropriations to the schools. The proposed budget includes a shift change from twenty-four hours to twelve hours in EMS and the addition of two telecommunicators in ECOM. Both of these recommendations are attributed to higher call volumes and the safety of both our residents and our staff. County departmental needs include funding some delayed purchases, maintaining planned computer, vehicle, and equipment replacement schedules, and performing facility maintenance. In this age of web-based technology, streaming media, and mobile computing, it is also necessary for us to deal with the technology needs of the public and those required by other agencies. Technology has become part of our infrastructure and is a necessity. Because of this, we are also looking at ways through virtualization and other means to decrease our computer-related costs in the future and protect the integrity of our network. This recommended budget includes an increase in funding for the two local school systems in Mitchell Community College. If approved, the per pupil allocation would increase by three percent from one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars to one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. Based on this, in the recommended increase to the college, there is an overall increase of four-point-nine-five percent over last year, and school funding will continue to comprise over fifty-two percent of the county budget. Aridale County employees are the backbone of the organization and the services we provide. Although they have not received pay adjustments in the last three years, it is understandable and justified. However, at this point, we are faced with the possibility of losing valued personnel to other employers, while at that same time realizing the costs of replacing those individuals, often at a higher salary and with additional equipment and education costs. Funds are included in the proposed budget for salary increases that will partially address our growing compression issue by fully funding the last two pay study cycles, as well as up to two percent in performance pay that would be determined and applied at the employee's anniversary. I've attempted to limit the number of recommended new personnel overall. However, the shift change in EMS alone will require seven new positions, and I have recommended two telecommunicator positions in ECOM to satisfy the increase in calls. These public safety positions account for seventy percent of the total requested. In addition to these two departments, I am recommending another four full-time equivalents in other departments. These proposed staff additions are either planned to pay for themselves or bring staffing up to the level of their facility or their department requirements. Recently, the board approved a one-point-six million dollar, one-point-six million dollars in appropriated fund balance to address delayed maintenance issues at county facilities. However, we are faced with future needs for new or upgraded facilities as well. Soon, there will be a need for a new jail, an expanded or new ECOM center, two to three EMS stations, and potentially more. This budget recommends just over two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars to be set aside in a building fund to assist in future planning for facilities. This is a small percentage of the overall costs, however, it's a step in that direction. Based on the information presented in the preceding message, and to complete my obligation under General Statute, General Statute one ninety-five dash eleven, I recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the proposed fiscal year twenty-thirteen budget of one-hundred-and-sixty-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty dollars. This will keep the current tax rate at forty-eight-point-five cents per one-hundred dollars in valuation, and is based on a tax base of twenty-billion-four-hundred-and-sixty-three-million-five-hundred-thousand dollars, with a collection rate of ninety-six-point-ninety-five percent. The fund balance on June thirtieth, two thousand twelve, is estimated to be thirty-four-million-two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars, which is twenty-one-point-three-four percent of the recommended budget. This concludes my message, and I would like to just take a moment to thank the staff and everyone that has made my first budget a whole lot easier, and particularly our finance department, and I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have.
Okay, any, any questions of our manager, Mr. Ron Smith? Four-one cent, Brian.
One-point-nine-eight million.
One-point-nine-eight?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Well, Mr. Smith, I want to thank you for the work you put in this. I know it was a daunting task to begin with, and I heard a lot of positive comments from the staff, the way you approached this thing, and the input you sought from them, and I congratulate you on that. And I know you probably liked Dwight Eisenhower and early morning in June sixth, it's out of your hands now, it's up to somebody else. But we do, we do appreciate it and look forward to working through this. I do think that you're wise to steer as much as you can away from adding to the operational costs of the county, because the increase is almost completely relying upon sales tax, and they are cyclical. Another economic downturn, and that money can go away, as we found out well over the last three, four years. So, I congratulate you on your wisdom to that, and I'm sure the rest of my commissioners look forward to working with you on it, and appreciate your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we have, I believe nothing else to come to our attention. We do have a closed session, so at this point, I move that we go into closed session in regard of General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, A four, in regards to economic development. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. There'll be acts taken as a result of our closed session. At this point, I would offer a motion to authorize the chairman to sign a letter to the North Carolina Department of Commerce indicating support for official state certification of a 310-plus acre tract known as Longview off of Belle Farm Road. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll at this point defer to our vice chairman, I believe, who has a motion prepared.
I make a motion to call for a public hearing on June 19th, 2012 at 7:00 p.m. regarding an economic development incentive of $56,400 over a five-year period for undisclosed company based on $3 million.
All right. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll turn to Commissioner Mitchell, who I believe has a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to call for a public hearing on June 5th, 2012 at 7:00 p.m. regarding an economic development incentive of $2,169,696 over a six-year period for an undisclosed company based on a $93.2 million investment in Iredale County.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. If there's no other business to come to our attention, I'll offer a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?